Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting in order. The Village of Deerfield Board of Trustees Meeting Monday, March 18, 2024. Roll call, please.
Mayor Shapiro.
Here.
Trustee Benton.
Here.
Trustee Berg.
Here.
Trustee Jacoby.
Here.
Trustee Matt Childers is absent. Trustee Oppenheim, here. We have a quorum.
Thanks, Jerry. If we could all stand up, please, for the pledge of allegiance. And Jennifer Goldstone, if you could please lead us.
Wherever you want.
That's fine. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm really looking forward to this meeting. We have a lot of great stuff. A lot of good things happening at this meeting. And I see we have a lot of people here to join in some of the things that we're going to do. So let me thank you in advance for coming tonight. One of the first nice things about this meeting is my pleasure to ask for the appointment and for the board's consideration of Jennifer Goldstone to fill the vacancy of Bill Seiden, who we know passed away on February 9. It is with my honor that I would like to ask this board to appoint Jennifer, or to accept my appointment to Jennifer, who previously served on the plan commission for seven years, almost seven years, where she did a terrific job. She's a real estate attorney, managing member of the firm Horwich Goldstone &amp; Shaw, and has experience in all facets of real estate transactions. She's lived in the village of Deerfield with her husband Bruce for more than 20 years, has two kids who are away at college. And with that, I'd like to accept or hear a motion to appoint.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jennifer Goldstone as a village trustee.
So moved. Second. Second, second. So excited.
We have three seconds from one person, Jerry. Roll call, please.
Record. Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby.
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Absolutely.
And trustee Benton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, now, before we applaud and before you take your seat up here, I administer the oath.
Make it official.
During the pandemic.
I, Jennifer Goldstone, have been appointed to the office of trustee
Have you been appointed to the office of trustee?
Of the village of Deerfield
Of the village of Deerfield.
And the counties of Lake and Co.
And the counties of Lake and Co.
Do solemnly swear our firm
Do solemnly swear our firm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of trustee
Of the office of trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I don't know, we got three lawyers in a row now. What does that mean?
That's the beginning of a joke.
Watch.
I am personally so thrilled that you're here with us.
Thank you.
All right, let's get to business. I would now like to... David, do you have the photos you need? Okay. I would now like to get to the second great part of this meeting. And that's a proclamation. Hale Weiner Lifetime Achievement Award. I'm going to read the proclamation and then just say a couple of words. Whereas with profound sadness, the village of Deerfield mourns the loss of Harold Weiner, a dear friend and a treasured colleague, who peacefully passed away surrounded by his family on November 30, 2023, at the age of 97. And whereas Hale, the son of Russian immigrants, was born in Rochester, New York, and exhibited exceptional dedication during World War II. And whereas after his return from World War II, Hale's resistance and commitment led him to pursue education, obtaining a veteran's GED at the age of 24 and entering into Syracuse University on the GI Bill, eventually settling in Chicago where he worked as a Cook County Judicial Probation Officer and attended night school, John Marshall Law School. And whereas in 1963, Hale's connection to the community blossomed when he became the outside counsel for the village of Deerfield, gradually becoming its permanent prosecutor, a role he fulfilled for nearly 60 years, making him perhaps the longest-serving prosecutor in Lake County history. Whereas Hale's dedication to justice was acknowledged with the municipal prosecutor's Lifetime Achievement Award for his unwavering commitment. And whereas Hale witnessed the growth of Deerfield into a vibrant suburban community while maintaining his cherished spirit, easy smile, and keen sense of humor, leaving an indelible mark on the legal landscape and those he worked with. Therefore, I, Mayor Daniel C. Shapiro, do hereby proclaim that the village of Deerfield honors the memory of Harold Weiner, an exemplar of dedication, service, and humor, and whose legacy will forever be etched in else of Deerfield history. Proclaimed this 18th day of March, 2024. Do I have a motion to approve?
Absolutely.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That proclamation was about two and a half minutes long for a man who lived 97 years and gave to his country, to his family, and to his village. And he's worthy of this time and this moment and this dedication for the life that he lived. His sons, David, Evan, Todd, his daughter Beth and his wife Jan are here tonight. And I'd like to present this to any of you who would like to come up.
John, you want to join us for that presentation, please, chief?
No problem. No problem.
I never had anything repaired, but every time I stepped in here as a child, it just felt like family. My dad would take us to the police department and we'd come to village hall meetings. The difference, I think, at Deerfield amongst all the other communities, it's a sense of family he already felt. He's gone through, I don't know how many mayors, police chiefs, trustees, and to him, every single person he ran into was special to him. And for Jennifer, welcome to Deerfield. So I think the only person here that knows him way back was John Sliosis in the 1970s, when he started as a rookie on his first day. And he's still here and, you know. But he viewed my brother and I the same feeling because there's a feeling of family here. I don't, can't say... I mean, my brother and I know all the prosecutors in Lake County. They're all dear friends of ours. I can tell you that. I don't think one of them feels the same way about their villages that we feel about Deerfield. You know. It would become more apparent when we'd go to the Christmas parties and just the kind of... When people would come up to him and just show him the kind of love that he felt towards them. And also those gifts he liked getting, the kind of unusual gifts. So, you know, when you were talking, I got... Let's say I got tears in my eyes, I got a little choked up thinking about what he meant to this village and what the village meant to him. And just on behalf of my family and my mother especially, I want to thank you very much for this. Thank you.
You're welcome. I now like to ask for a presentation from the DHS Arts Alive group. Is Tamara Jenkins here? Going once, going twice.
I didn't see her.
No, not here? Okay.
Oh, too bad.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Sure. And congratulations to the great achievements of Hale. Wow. What happened?
That's weird that she didn't show up.
I know. Something must have happened.
Look at that. Look at how many people were there just for five minutes. It's amazing.
Where? I mean...
Oh, David connected with her a lot.
Oh, okay.
Maybe we'll do it again because... Don't know.
No. She's not here. It's a good event.
It goes perfectly with your...
Somebody's stuff. See, look at somebody's watching people. Oh, it's Jennifer's.
Yeah.
Oh, it's yours. I thought it was some...
Yeah, right.
That was my thought.
They'll stay.
I now like to ask for the board's consent and an appointment of Andrew Worley to the Greenhouse Gas Reduction Ad Hoc Working Group. Do you want to say anything?
Yeah, if anybody has any questions, we actually have been meeting... Andrew has participated in our group. He's come to several meetings and is very, very interested in environmentalism and brought us some information and contacts with people about solar energy and really helped us out. So I'm an old PTA person. I have learned you never turn down a great volunteer. You never do. And his participation thus far has been very, very helpful. And we are trying to make sure we have enough people on this committee that we can keep working and that we never stumble. We're having a little... It's questionable just how much sustainability their group is going to be able to participate. So adding Andrew to our group will help us keep working. And he's been a terrific help so far. So I would urge my colleagues to vote to approve.
Do we have a motion? So moved.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Good job, Jerry. Got her in there.
All right.
And I'd also like to say that Mr. Worley applied for...
Yes.
Through our board and commission process in 2020 for the Sustainability Commission. So this is somebody who's been trying... Expressed interest, wants to participate in village activities before. And now he's got, obviously proven himself over a course of some meetings.
Absolutely. He's got a sustained interest and has pretty much said whatever... Wherever he can help, he's happy to help. And that's what you want to hear. When you talk about Deerfield being family and people getting involved, that's exactly the kind of person you're talking about. So...
Wonderful.
We're thrilled.
Our next item on the agenda is the Police Department annual report. Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. And before I get started on this, I'd like to thank you for the kind words regarding Hale. It was clear that the impact that he had on members of the department, the village, anywhere he went extended way beyond that prosecution of cases. And truly a really special individual. I think you didn't see much of the family this evening, but they will... His legacy will continue through them. Outstanding family, wearing good hands. The sons have taken over those prosecution duties. And we won't miss a beat, but we'll surely miss Hale. And they're right, it goes back to the 70s that I knew him. And we had a lot of good talks and a lot of good conversations.
And what, you were like, what, five or six?
I was five or six, just barely. Had to get dropped off for work. Same thing, now I need to be driven home. Again, thank you. And moving forward, it's our pleasure to present to you the Police Department's annual report for 2023. I believe each of you received a copy and, as you can see, fairly detailed and a lot of information contained in those pages. Like to give a quick overview of some of the content and then ask each of the deputy chiefs to expand on certain relevant topics, including in their presentations with information concerning the 911 center and the remodeling of that in this past year, the drone program, new to the agency again in 2023, some of the community outreach functions we perform, and other emphasis on some of the patrol operations. One area of concern continues to center around recruitment and retention. We won't get into the detail, you've heard this before, but it is a concern. We are, as we stand here tonight, one person away from being fully staffed, which is much better than some of our partners surrounding us and throughout the Chicagoland area. We will keep our eyes on it. The number of people taking the test continues to decline. Lateral applicants has declined. We've had a ad out for that for about 18 days now, and I think we've had one applicant. So even that pool has dried up. So we're going to get creative and continue to look for ways, but I think it's something that we all need to keep our eyes on moving forward. Statistically, calls for service, which numbered right around 17,000, are slowly returning to pre-COVID levels. We had dipped to 12,000 during some of that time, as you would expect, but they are continuing to rise as we somewhat return to normal as much as possible. Other statistical categories, including crime statistics, crashes, and citations, remain consistent with the previous three years. Some of those detailed numbers are spelled out for you in different graphs and charts in that report. I think one thing we should...
Chief, if I could just interrupt, I think in many respects, they're lower this year than they were in the prior three years.
Correct.
Yeah.
And we'll touch upon some of that because it is cyclical. We understand that, but many of those numbers are lower. But because of some of the criminal activity surrounding us, we expect to see those numbers bounce for a period of time. But thank you. And one note, the criminal activity throughout the Chicagoland area continues to be rather random and cyclical. For example, catalytic converter theft, almost nonexistent three years ago. '22 and '23, we had 57 and 58 thefts of those catalytic converters. This year, so far to date, I don't think we've had any reported. So we're going to watch that fluctuate, I think, for a period of time to come as it's really a crime of convenience. It's quick, short, and sweet. The state passed some legislation to make it more difficult to get rid of the property. That did seem to slow down for a while, but I don't think that will be a lasting effect. And Mayor, to your point, thefts for motor vehicles, for example, dropped from 20 to 3, while motor vehicles and thefts... Or the motor vehicle thefts themselves went from 5 to 10. While only three were reported last year, within the last two weeks, we've probably exceeded the previous year of 20 cases. Two nights, crews come up here, they hit us en masse, and they can hit 10 to 12 to 15 cars in short order. During that period of time, one car stolen. 15 to 20 cars have gone through. So they did go down. And we already know we're going to see a bump in that number again as we move forward. As we said, those crimes continue to be cyclical and the report numbers probably will continue to ebb and flow. I think we should also note that removing those crimes involving burglaries to cars and stolen cars and catalytic converter type of crimes, our crime index would be about half of what we reported in 2023. So by far, the largest number of crimes we're seeing are related to what you see in the news throughout the Chicagoland area. As we said, we could reduce that crime index by half. And the good news is we can, and it's as simple as locking your doors at night. Every one of these crimes over the last five years, every stolen car but maybe one, and probably 99% of the cars that were burglarized, cars were unlocked or the key fob or key was sitting on the center console. So with the help of the community, we can reduce that number by half in quick order. And it's as simple as locking the door. Otherwise, it's equivalent to leaving a pile of cash in your driveway. It's no different, the way they come up here. So we do ask for folks' help in that way. We will make ourselves available again at the end of the presentation for questions. And at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Deputy Chief Budney for some input.
Evening. Thank you, Chief, Mayor, Board. As the chief explained of all the things we normally do with reference to the statistics and all that, I want to touch a little bit on some of the community outreach that we do. The department sees the importance of having a great relationship with the community and the business partners. And some of the events and programs that we did over in 2023, our Coffee with a Cop, our community roll calls, where we reach out into the communities, have roll calls throughout the summer, numerous safety presentations, station tours. The Home Run Derby between the Police and Fire Department during the Wooden Bat Tournament has been a very good success. First year was sort of okay. Second year, just to note that the PD won in 2023. The bragging rights there. We also have a tent normally at the Family Days and then also at Harvest Fest where we're there not only doing our duties, but that farmer's market, we always are out there with the bike units and that such. One of the biggest things that we do for the community outreach is the Citizens of Police Academy, which is extremely well-attended every time we have it. This year, excuse me, 2023, we had our first junior police academy with middle school students, which was a huge success. In addition to our community engagement, we do some fundraising throughout the year where we partner up with organizations throughout town and throughout the state. Some of our biggest ones are the Memorial Patch Project, which is during the month of May, which is Police Officer Month or Police Officer Week. We wear a subdued patch with the memorial stripe on our patch, and we accept any donations where citizens and alike can donate. This is also done with Shepherd Junior High or Middle School. We do Pack the Gym. We just did it last week where it's Police and Fire play against the eighth grade students. But all the proceeds from the tickets, everything, is donated to the 100 Club of Illinois, which...
How'd that go this year?
We're 0-2.
Okay.
But you were close. You were so close.
I think both years we've lost by one. So...
And they enjoyed the pizza.
We did beat the fire... When we play with the fire department, we have struggles, but when we play against them, we win. Just keep up the brag. Just saying. Exactly. I'll pay for that later. But this year, the total's not in, but it's upwards of a good amount of money for supporting families of fallen first responders. During the month of October, we partner with the Cancer Wellness Center of Northbrook for the Pink Patch Project, which in October, we wear the pink patch. Initially started to support breast cancer, but we've included all types of cancer, which is why we work with the Cancer Wellness Center of Northbrook. November, we do Cram the Cruiser, which benefits our veterans with the Veterans Closet. Bearded up, month of November, we allow officers to grow facial hair, grow beards in support of pediatric cancer. One of our other biggest drives is the Toy Drive, where we collect toys from the community and within the department for Lutheran General Hospital and the Ronald McDonald House for Christmas gifts that we donate to them. And then the one that's always cop on the top at Dunkin' Donuts for Illinois Special Olympics. So that just gives a little bit of what we do outside of our normal duties. One, to touch base on our school resource officers. And 2013 is when we had our first SRO at Deerfield High School. Rihanna has been... Officer Hall has been our SRO for the last five years. She has been replaced by Officer Mackenzie Cherestall, who is the new SRO up there and is doing very well. And just wanted to throw a little shout out to Rihanna. Thanks for everything she's done for the last five years. She has been up there for quite some time. Lauren Molinato is our current SRO at the District 109 schools. And those relationships have always been good in the past, but have really increased and become even better over the last several years. The chief mentioned the drone program. That is a new program for 2023. The drone assists us in relieving manpower and assisting manpower to where the drone can cover many different areas a lot faster in searches and areas where officers can't get initially. So that has been very helpful for us. We did have the drone up at Family Days last year for the fireworks and for the parade, and then also for Harvest Fest. That information that the drone can obtain for us is... You can't measure it, you know, for what it can do for us strategically. We currently have five pilots. Two more are going to training in '24. In addition to the Family Day and Harvest Fest, we had five different deployments, three of which were searching for missing people and then two for fleeing suspects. I won't tell you our record on that. Bike unit is another unit that is a specialty unit. We have 12 officers, including a commander and a sergeant. They do supplement patrol with the availability of the unit. It allows, again, for quicker response in a lot of our details. Wooden Bat Tournament, Harvest Fest. They're at food truck events. It just gives them a much better mobility and can get to stuff a lot faster. They also work with some of the races, 5K races that we have. And then the last thing I want to touch on is our social services. One of the few departments that have and have had them ever since I've been here, one to two social workers that their main priorities are really two. The village as a whole and then the police department and the village as a whole as staff. They work off of referrals from our patrol officers. It's pretty much second nature for them to get daily referrals from patrol officers, and they reach out back to the officers and work with the families within town, which is very beneficial. They will also conduct critical incident debriefings when our officers and we go on calls that are traumatic to most and they're even traumatic to us at times. They sit down and they debrief us and, you know, work with us on getting through those incidences. They talk to the officers, dispatchers, firefighters, anybody that has been involved in that, which has been very positive. And that rolls right into our wellness program that they administer or they monitor and helps officers with their mental health, wellness, nutrition, financial, and physical well-being. So they work very closely with everybody within the department. And one special note on those two, Katerina and Izzy, is I know just from other departments contacting us that they have been instrumental, I think, in the starting of other programs at other departments. They've helped interview people for other departments, which is, I think, says a lot for the two that we have. So that's all I have to talk about. I'll turn it over to Chris.
All right. I was going to say, good evening, Mayor, but you stepped out for a moment, so...
It's not you, Chris.
I know, I know. But thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Board, and congratulations, trustee Goldstone, on your appointment tonight.
Thank you.
I'm going to talk briefly about the Communications Department and our training for the agency. These are two things that I think are... Make it very easy for me to speak about because I'm very proud of these two components of the agency. Our Communication Center, 2023, was an understatement, but it was a big year for the Communication Center. We have... Our dispatch center serves not just Deerfield, but Bannockburn, Riverwoods, and Lincolnshire, which is a huge task and undertaking in itself. We have a communications director. We have eight full-time dispatchers and five part-time dispatchers. They're busy answering the non-emergency calls, our 911 emergency calls. They're handling the radio traffic for all four of these towns. They are, when our records clerks aren't there, they're handling the walk-ins into the lobby and meeting with folks there. So they're doing a lot of different things. And as the chief mentioned last year, over... And as the Chief mentioned last year, over 17,000 calls for service just in Deerfield alone. And for the four communities total, they handled over 57,000 calls for service between the four towns. So they stay busy with all sorts of different types of calls and activities. So with that, we saw a lot of transition last year between our staff itself, the building and the construction that went on, and we had a major recognition from the state. So I'm just gonna run through those really quick. First off, Mary Ann, she left us in July, retired after 29 years. So we had that big, you know, knowledge walk out of the door as far as how to run that center. She'd been doing it for a long time. And our staff stepped up and for a while, we didn't have a designated director. So our staff, we were kind of watching, overseeing, they were doing a lot of things and really stepping up and handling everything and did a phenomenal job with that. At the end of the year, we did appoint Sergeant Steve Petterelli to that director's position and he stepped in and making great strides and doing good things and can't wait to see what the future's gonna bring with him. We also saw the addition of two new dispatchers we brought on. One of them just finished up training and she got released on her own, doing a terrific job. And we have another one who's nearing that end of training. So pretty soon, we're gonna be back up to full staff and, you know, doing, doing great things. So a lot going on with that staff, but things are looking good. The big proud moment we had was in the fall, we received notification from the State of Illinois, the chapter of the Association of Public Safety Communication Officials, otherwise known as APOC. But we were notified by them that one of our dispatchers, Justin Gonzalez, was selected as the dispatcher of the year for the State of Illinois. So it was an outstanding recognition by his peers that chose him just to, you know, kind of reiterate the terrific job he does and that exemplary service that he provides to the officers that are on the street, the citizens when they come in, when they call. But it was a great recognition for Justin. He had to go, in Springfield, they recognized him there, received an award and, you know, terrific, terrific things to come. Second part of dispatch is the construction and that was started by you, the Board, supporting us through the consolidation battles and just being there for us and making sure that we got over those hurdles and then supporting us when we approached you with wanting to move forward with the renovation in there. That all started in 2022 and then in 2023 in April is when the demolition started for that project. We moved our dispatchers into a temporary facility in the building and without any disruption to the community, the officers, nobody knew what was happening on the street when they were calling on the phone. It was seamless. So officers didn't even realize what was occurring, that they had moved locations. The technology behind that was unbelievable to watch and how it occurred. We worked with Husner Corporation for the project. Things moved ahead of schedule oftentimes. There were a couple of times where we had to pause and wait because the construction was moving so fast that we were waiting for equipment from vendors that we didn't have the control over. So they did an amazing job of keeping us on task and as a partner in that project. So we were very lucky there. Completed in September with us moving back in at the end of September with full implementation, with additional answering points, so we added additional space in there, updated technology, equipment, everything to be prepared for the future, which we don't know what that's gonna hold for us as, as we move forward and grow and look to brighter things. And I think it's important to note that this project, almost the entire project was funded through 911 surcharge funds. So very little cost to the village and, you know, the, the support we set at the Dispatch Center and the PD as a whole, thank you. The second part I wanted to talk about tonight is training. Training is a tremendous, you know, component for the police department, constantly ongoing, ever-changing, from what we need to do to what the state is mandating us, our accrediting body that, you know, watches over us and we receive our accreditation through COLIA. So we have a lot of different people that we have to make sure we're meeting all of those training mandates. In 2023, some of the things that we went through, crisis intervention training, active threat training, cyber forensics for computers, which is the wave of the future. So many of our crimes involve a computer, a cellphone, you know, those types of things. All hazards training, dementia response, autism awareness, and these are just some of the trainings that we receive in addition to our, you know, kind of standard that you think about with police training with use of force and legal updates and, you know, firearms, those kinds of things. So the training that our officers receive is, is unbelievable and just reaches everywhere. So a couple of the big trainings we had last year that we brought in, people from Texas, and they are from the Advanced Law Enforcement Rapid Response Training Center, they come in and it's a nationally renowned, highly sought-after training and they came here on-site and trained six of our officers along with some people from the FBI and I think there were some people from Ohio. They came in wanting to get this training. So they were here for a week, our officers went through that, they're now trainers in this program, so we're really proud to have them on board. We also participated with the fire department, the Center for Enriched Living in Riverwoods. They hosted an open house for all of our officers and our firefighters to help, you know, know how to respond to emergency situations for citizens and their families, you know, that have special needs. So it was a great opportunity for our officers to participate in that. And the final thing I'm gonna leave you with is our total number of hours for training last year. We had 7,417 hours of total training for our department, which if you break that down is roughly 170 hours per officer and over four weeks of an officer's year is spent training. So it's, you know, that, that time that those officers are removed from the street and receiving that training. So it is a huge task and a terrific undertaking, but, you know, it's constantly changing and we're always ready for that challenge. So with that, I'm gonna wrap my things up. I'm gonna turn it back over for Chief Sliosus and as he mentioned a minute ago, will be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris and Brian. We will open it up for questions, but before we do that, I'd be remiss and Chris and Brian both touched upon it, none of this, as you can see, we do a lot. There's a lot of things that go on behind the scenes that most people don't see, they're not aware of. And that really would not be possible without the support of you, the Mayor, and the members of the Board on a continuing basis, from the day-to-day training to the redoing of that center. It all starts with this room. When we, we come and ask you, listen, and generally it's seamless and flawless and I think that's largely because of you folks, your predecessors as well, that we get these things done behind the scenes. And as Chris said, that transition in communications was seamless, but for being in that room, people wouldn't even know what's happening. I think a lot of the stuff that goes on behind the scenes in our agency, that's true. A lot of things go on that the general public doesn't see. But again, it's because of you and the people in the, in the community, the support that they give us, the support that our, our folks give each other greatly appreciated. We couldn't do it without the community, without you guys. It's a lot of work, but we're getting it done. Tough environment right now for our folks. We see that through the, the recruitment that we touched upon, but outstanding group of professionals. They respond like professionals when they need to and we greatly appreciate and sometimes take for granted what they do on a daily basis. They see a lot of things that people don't realize. It can be very tough, but they continue to thrive and adjust and do an outstanding job. So I thank them for everything they do as we thank you as well. With that, we will turn it over to any questions that you may have.
Chief, I, I want to thank you, Brian and Chris. True to form, you guys are humble and modest and very low-key about everything that you do to keep us safe and secure in this community year after year through all of your accomplishments. Many times, people will come up to me and I'm sure we share the same sentiments and say, what a wonderful agency and department that, that you lead.
Thank you.
It's just outstanding. You have a full complement of people except for one.
Yep.
I understand that, but that's pretty good. And, and the reason I think that is, is because of the leadership that all of you guys show and the, one of, one of the things I picked up, Brian, I think from what you were saying, is the relationships with the community and with each other. So it, it shows, it shows in, in the force and it shows in why people are here, why people stay here and why people want to be here. Thank you again for everything you do.
Thank you.
Questions?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I really appreciate the thoroughness of this report.
That's excellent.
This was a slightly different format than we've seen in the past and you're covering a whole lot of different areas that maybe you didn't share with us and it's wonderful to find out all the detail on what you guys are doing.
Thank you. And I need to thank our assistant, Valerie Mall, who did the yeoman's work on this.
Oh, tell Valerie.
And, and some of that wasn't intentional. It was a little bit of a transition to more of the community service type of thing than, and I think that goes unnoticed many times and you've, many of you've been involved firsthand with some of those fundraisers and they continue to do a great job and you watch the community interaction, it's really healthy and it's a lot of fun.
And it's helpful for us, you know, as we represent to the community and tell them what you guys do if they don't know. So it's great for us to know. And one of the things that always strikes me when I, when I hear you guys talk about it and when I see the department in action is how many of the officers, how many of our police force are involved in these community outreach? It's not just four or five of the same people all the time. It's everybody. And I think that really speaks highly of the quality of the people we've been employing and their dedication and, and the teamwork of you guys in marshaling their time. The fact that we're doing so much more training now, if we've learned anything over the last few years, it's that everybody has to be prepared for everything. We never thought we'd have to be prepared for some of the things that have come along over the last few years. And I, for one, as a resident and as involved in the community, am appreciative of the fact that we're looking ahead, that we're planning, that we're doing all we can to prepare ourselves for safety, no matter what happens. So I appreciate, appreciate that a lot. And in this report, all the detail you gave us was very, very helpful.
Well, thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate your support. Jennifer, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Minutes of the previous meeting, March 4th, 2024, Board of Trustees meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second. Because Jennifer wasn't here and I wasn't here, I'm gonna ask for a roll call on this one.
Trustee Oppenheim? I have to abstain, I was not here either.
You might have to vote. You can vote if you weren't here, let's remember.
All right, I'll approve them.
From a legal standpoint, you can vote right then and so forth.
Can I? I, they look great. I vote yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Mayor Shapiro?
Yes.
Okay.
I will vote yes.
Okay, thank you.
One question, do we have a second to that?
Yes.
Larry's second.
Bills and payroll, is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second, roll call please.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Is there any public comment on any non-agenda item?
If there are any public.
There is none. All right, now moving on to reports, we have one item on the consent agenda. It's item 2432-1, ordinance approving the 2024 zoning map. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
And is the approval for the, for the ordinance, sorry about that, roll call please.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
No, old business, excuse me, new business, item 2436, resolution to award police department lighting upgrade contract to BA Lighting.
Thank you, Mayor. Over the past two years, staff have been working to upgrading fluorescent light fixtures on village-owned properties, particularly over the past year, we've upgraded them in administration, finance, community development, and shortly we'll actually be replacing them out in the loft area here and the hallways and the bathrooms. The next step was to begin replacing them in the police department. LED lights have a longer lifespan, as we all know, and they are significantly more efficient. The contract is to replace all the lights in the police department, the first floor and the basement, and this item is fully budgeted for. The village has worked with BA Lighting for a number of years. They are COMED certified, which is the key point, so we get a number of COMED rebate credits by using them. And with that, are there any questions?
Is there a motion to approve the resolution? So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Are there any other public buildings that are left for, for the upgrade of lighting?
There are, some of the public works facilities. So in some cases, just due to the large cost of doing this, we've kind of been piecemealing it here or there as fixtures have broken. With this one, a large number of items had been broken, it just made sense to do it all at the same time, especially in the police department, it's more security and things like that. It just made sense to do it at once.
But, but the objective is to get all of them eventually-
Yes.
-to the LED format, which obviously saves energy.
Yeah, but we, most of our conversion is done.
A few of them, but most, most of the bigger ones are done.
Item 2437, a resolution waiving the competitive bidding requirements and approving an agreement with Tyler Technologies for adjudication software contract.
When a violation ticket is issued by the village, the offender's options are either to go to the police department and pay the fine or to ask for a court date at the appropriate county court system, whether that's Lake or Cook County. For other municipalities, for minor offenses, they have in-house adjudication at the village hall of the police department. This is a case for Buffalo Grove, Highland Park, Lake Forest, Northbrook, Glenview, Vernon Hills, a variety of other communities in the area. Consistent with previous direction from the village board, staff began investigating options to implement in-house adjudication here. These courts typically deal with ordinance violations, minor traffic offenses, and code enforcement issues. Formally implementing an adjudication system will require municipal updates, which we will bring to a future board meeting later this spring. To manage the adjudications court system, staff researched multiple softwares that, again, for the adjudication process. There's two main companies, one of which is Dachra, the other one is the Tyler Technology adjudication system. As the Board may know, the village is very integrated with the Tyler Technology family, the umbrella, so the Munis Financial System, the New World Police Department software, Tyler Pay, so on so forth. So it only made sense to really move forward with them because, again, it's, it's a similar company. So this software will touch every single one of those softwares and there's no additional cost for making those connections. Whereas if you use another software, you pay for every single one of those connections and every time something breaks, it's, you know, it's their fault, it's their fault. So for the sake of our IT department especially and for cost, it made sense really to stick with them. So the total cost at Deerfield is $41,167, which is significantly over to the budgeted amount of $12,000. However, this expense is anticipated to have an offsetting revenue stream that will cover the cost once fully implemented. Again, the reason for that very large gap is when we originally went forward with this, the intention was to use paper. It was not to use a software. However, the first thing we found was when we went to these other communities is they said, for the love of God, use a software and don't use paper. It's so much paper, it's a court system, it's, you know, it's the 21st century, it's time to use a software. So learning that, we took a step back. Instead of implementing adjudication this year, we decided to hold off one year, use the budget that we had and then spend the next six to nine months implementing the software with the intention of bringing adjudication in-house in quarter one of 2025. So that's why there was, because this was not something we were intentionally moving forward with until we found more information out. Again, while that is significantly over budget, it will pay for itself once everything is up and running at that point. That is the cost, so the $41,167 is the cost for 2024. There are estimated annual recurring fees of $4,551, which will begin in 2025 and then continue on as long as we use the product. With that, are there any questions?
Eric, do we need a budget amendment?
We may need one at the end of the year when we, when we look at the, the full general fund budget, but at this point, there's sufficient money to do that. So we'll, we'll be back at the end of the year, depending on how that flows through.
And we have staff to implement this now? We, we have a plan for how we're gonna put this in place?
We do have a plan. So we're working heavily, the IT department's been involved from the very beginning, it will be a very IT-heavy project. Again, because we already have so many Tyler products, in theory, it should be easier since we're not implementing all of these at the same time, but it, it is a six to nine month process.
Wow.
Kickoff a year from now-ish.
That's the goal, quarter one of 2025.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution which would waive competitive bidding?
So moved.
Second, roll call.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item 2438, a resolution waiving competitive bidding and approving an agreement with Tyler for e-citation software.
Deerfield currently uses paper tickets for police department and building code enforcement warning and citations. Again, it's a police officer or building official physically writing a ticket and then handing that to the offender. That ticket is then brought to the records clerk in the police department, they manually enter it into the New World software and then the counties, the Lake and Cook County, I don't believe, take digital tickets anyways, then it has to be physically printed back out and then given to the county. So, you know, it's, it made sense for many years, but now as the softwares are up and coming.
Do we use parchment paper for that?
And a quill.
Quill pens.
Yes, and a quill pen. So, it makes sense now to start implementing an e-citation system. So, this will be using a phone, a tablet, an iPad, you know, again, whether it's police or using their computer in their car, or it's a code enforcer using their iPad, they will manually type everything in. They have an attached wireless printer. It prints out the ticket. You give it to them. You hit enter. It immediately gets sent to New World, and then once the county takes digital tickets, eventually it'll make it there, or it'll go to the adjudication system, software here. Just like I mentioned with the last item, it makes sense to stick with the Tyler product, especially as we implement adjudication. So, you know, we did obtain pricing, but it really, I mean, it is significantly cheaper just to stick with any type of Tyler products. During the due diligence process, staff reached out to the village of Bannockburn, who were also interested in purchasing the software. As part of the 911 dispatch agreement, our IT department is essentially Bannockburn's IT department for their Police Department computers and their New World software. So, we did encourage Bannockburn to move forward a little bit quicker. They were thinking about doing this in 2025. However, for our IT department, they would have to do this literally twice, once for Deerfield, once for Bannockburn. So, we said, "Not only will it be cost efficiencies, it'll significantly help our IT department if we both do this at the same time." So, with that, they would be a subsidiary on Deerfield's Tyler Technology account. Therefore, we would pay the total amount and then bill Bannockburn, and they would pay us within 30 days for that. So, the budget was $29,700. Deerfield's total cost would be $38,545. Bannockburn's would be $16,862, for a total cost of $55,407. But again, Bannockburn would pay their portion for this. The estimated annual fees, beginning in 2025, would be $11,032 for the village of Deerfield. That would be go up, you know, 5% from there on out, as long as we're using that software. This is $8,845 over the budgeted amount. Most of this is due to the fact that it was originally intended just for the Police Department, but as we looked at it for code enforcement, especially with the adjudication system, we added on a number of licenses for the Building Department, along with the accompanying, you know, tablet software licenses and all of that. So, that's where the majority, that's where the total increase came from. With that, are there any questions?
Justin, are the cars set up for this additional technology? I mean, it's a printer, I assume, but we always talk about when we get police cars, you know, we have to integrate all the equipment that we need in there.
Yes.
We will be able to accommodate this?
Yeah, that is something we're working with the Police Department in. As you noticed, you know, they already have the laptop in there, so that's not a problem. But the printer, there really isn't any more space. So, it sounds like they basically built a bracket to mount it right on the cage in the back of the police car, or I should say, in the front seat of the police car.
The guys got to put them under their hats, or what?
But this is citations, not just police, the code?
Yes, so any type of municipal code violation, any type, whether the, so code enforcement will have the iPads, because right now, when we're writing, you know, stop work order, contractor fines, tree cutting down without a permit fines, whatever it may be, we're using the same physical, like, P-ticket, the parking ticket books that we're writing those tickets for. So, it's so much easier on the tablet. And again, for example, records is always calling me with my terrible handwriting. You know, they can't read anything, so it's just a lot easier on the tablet. It's just instantly uploaded, and you're good to go.
I think that alone is worth going over a budget.
Absolutely.
Ben?
Just one thing with an update to the agreement is, earlier today, Tyler agreed to make one addition to the agreement, so it's not reflected in the packet, but it was just adding a line at the request of Bannockburn that they, that Bannockburn is a third-party beneficiary to the contract, which has no impact whatsoever on the village, but gives them a right to enforce the contract against Tyler if, for some reason, there's a breach. So, I just wanted to point that out because that was added post-packet.
And Ben, that sounds like a good thing, for me.
It is.
Allow them to do that, too.
Exactly. So, it is a good thing and not any risk to the village.
Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
And just to be clear, it's to approve the contract and waive competitive bidding. Roll call.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item 2439, a resolution approving the IGA with Bannockburn for that software.
Exactly, yes. This is just an IGA for what we just discussed with the e-citations. Deerfield's, or sorry, Bannockburn's a subsidiary account, and they're just agreeing to pay us that amount appropriately.
Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second. Roll call.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Now, we have three matters that come together with regards to the potential adoption of TIF District number?
Four.
Four. I always get confused on the number. TIF District number four. The first is 2440, an ordinance approving a tax increment redevelopment plan and project for the Lake Cook Road redevelopment area.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. And the next three ordinances do go together. They're related to the Lake Cook Road TIF District. This has been a long road coming. The board has been working on this for a long time. The public hearing was held February 20th. We have not received additional comments since the public hearing. Recall, the Lake Cook TIF District is eight parcels and 45 acres, south side of Lake Cook Road, which is the vacant former Walgreens campus, as well as the Embassy Suites Hotel. And the EAV, should these ordinances be approved, would be frozen at the $45 million, $45 million, which is less than 3% of the village's total EAV. So, if the board wishes to establish the Lake Cook Road TIF District number four, then you all would adopt the following three ordinances, and this would be the final action to be taken, and then these ordinances would be sent to Cook County to certify the TIF District. And so, I'll ask Ben to help me elaborate on this, but essentially, the three ordinances you're going to approve, the first one would be to approve the tax increment redevelopment plan and project for Lake Cook Road TIF District. Then you would designate the Lake Cook Road redevelopment project area pursuant to the TIF Act. And then finally, you would adopt tax increment financing for the Lake Cook Road redevelopment plan that was originally adopted.
It feels a little clunky to have three separate ordinances, and you can thank the General Assembly for how the TIF Act is written.
Yes.
But it calls for these three ordinances. So, it basically separates three component parts. The first is the plan, which is what's saying this area is appropriate for the creation of the TIF District and laying forth the goals for its redevelopment. The second, which literally is the boundary, saying this is where the TIF is going to be. And then the third is authorizing, it's truly a taxing provision that just basically says, this, we are now authorizing the TIF funds to be collected, gathered, and administered.
Right.
So, that, I know weird to have in three, but it is what it is.
Is there a motion on ordinance, on matter 2440? An ordinance approving a TIF District, sorry, a TIF redevelopment plan and project for the Lake Cook redevelopment area?
Move to accept the ordinance.
Second. Roll call.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Going on to 2441, anything more you need to say, Your Honor?
Nothing further.
I have a tiny question. What is the eighth parcel? I count seven and a little rectangle in the middle of four of them. Is that little rectangle parcel number eight?
It is. There's a parcel with like a zero tax bill, and it's on the Walgreens property. And yes, so there's, it is unclear when you look at the taxing parcels versus the addresses of the buildings, versus counting the physical buildings out there themselves.
Right.
It does get a little confusing. One of the buildings in the heart of the Walgreens campus is U-shaped.
That's why.
And so, are you counting that as one building or two buildings? But it has two addresses, so we tend to count them as two.
All right. As long as we're clear on the periphery, I guess, the interior is less important, but I was hopeful that there wasn't a secret parcel.
No secrets.
I would be hopeful that there was. I don't know. Is there a motion on this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item 2442, an ordinance adopting tax increment allocation financing for the Lake Cook Road redevelopment area. Is there a motion? Move approval?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Staff has been working on this for quite a while. You guys have done a tremendous job of bringing this home. Thank you, Ben, for all of your hard work on this. This could be a really wonderful moment. One question before we finish.